All righty, let's call this meeting ordered. Please rise for flag, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three, any citizen is earned to be heard. Here in note number four, consideration of possible action on approving the minutes for May 1st and 3rd of 2017. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the motion carries. Number five, consideration of possible action on waiving or adjusting placement of rock as required for permanent road crossing permits for Stack Pipeline. Anyone here with Stack?
I've spoken with him. In fact, he came in because he had to switch off the check, asked us to go back on. I can, I can relay to you what he told me. They had just called, and they, he didn't say who, various vendors to lay the rock that's required on those permits, and were essentially looking at a million dollar bill, which I found hard to believe. So that was their, their issue was just the cost of doing that. He said that he would be here.
Let's, let's move it down to the end and maybe he'll show up. Is that our?
Yes.
All righty, number six, Hope and Seal bid 2017, everything fine for building in addition at senior fire department consideration of possible action on awarding said bid.
We have two, Callahan Steel Buildings, RSM Development.
Callahan Construction. They bid, Callahan Construction bid $23,800. And start within four weeks of acceptance. And they included a certificate of liability. RSM Development. There we go.
Yeah, that's the one.
That's the insurance.
Oh, okay, $24,900. You guys want to look at them?
Yeah.
Read them? While y'all's doing that, we're going to move on on our agenda. If that's all right. Board of General?
Yes, sir.
Number seven, consideration of possible action on approving a contract with Atlas Paving for, for paving in Oak Springs Road District bid 2017-15.
They get all their stuff in?
We have all the bonds, two copies of the contract for this board to sign for that project. And then I will get them to Stillwater either this afternoon or in the morning to complete them and we'll be good to go.
So maybe we approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Or he does, I don't know.
No, it's the chairman.
Chairman, okay.
Who are you?
I already have. We were just waiting on to get the bonds done.
All righty, number eight, consideration of possible action on approving resolution disposing of 16 Panasonic laptops by donation from Sheriff's Office to the Crescent Police Department.
So how come everybody, every police officer in Crescent's going to get three laptops? I just. I'll get a. No, 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 no. I was, it just seemed like a, a lot of them for one small department.
Well, we still got enough place that much too.
Yeah.
But, but this year, the reason we're not using those is those are a, a C3 and some of our systems require a C4 top, something like that.
Yeah.
So we can't even use those anymore. So we're donating them for their cars, their, their workstations and everything else.
You guys. They got 16 places to use.
It's always a nice time to have a couple extra parts. We stab those ours.
Yeah, if you drop one, you look, yeah.
Yeah.
You're looking for something else. I move we approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You guys, you ready to roll?
Yes, sir.
Come on up, tell them what you think.
We take the Callahan. How you doing, sir?
What's that, the low bid?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All moving, we approve the Callahan being low bid as recommendation from senior fire department.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Good luck, Callahan.
Wes, will you go over and sign a requisition for Laura?
Yeah.
Will you go over and sign a requisition for Laura?
Yeah, I'll head straight over there.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks for all you do.
Yes, sir.
Number nine, consideration of possible action on approving resolution disposing by the way junking a refrigerator for the health department.
As long as they don't throw it on side for real.
You know that was what I was like.
As long as it don't get. Yeah, I got a metal pile that goes to it, almost silly.
I move we approve.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Bring it, put it on my metal pile. Make sure we pick up a lot of them. Refrigerators and mattresses. All righty, number 10.
We got tires.
Number 10, consideration of possible action on approving a resolution accepting contribution totaling a $30,000 donation from property owners on Prairie Grove Road to District 3 for paving. On this resolution, do they have the names specified?
Uh huh. Yes, I, I broke it out, each of the names and the dollar amount of their check here.
Because I know that they want a copy of something so that they can write it off on their taxes. Mike, you want to read through the names just so?
Sure.
It's on camera?
Sure. Jason Davison is donating $10,000. Wallace Owens Jr., $5,000. Dale Sorrell, $5,000. Premier, uh, Premier Stone County Tops L L C's $5,000 and Juan G. Guzman, Harinos, is $5,000. Total $30,000.
I move we approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. That was nice of them folks to help out like Harinos.
And we're on 50. If you got any extra left over, I've got a few of those.
So Troy, I guess if you'll make a copy for everybody that was official. All righty, number 11. Consideration of possible action on approving a resolution accepting $580 donation from James Dodson to District 2 for coal working section 17, 17 North and 1 East.
Make the motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I guess that's resolution be all right. Seems how the chairman, the vice chairman's not around.
Yeah, it came into me that way and I didn't even notice it.
I mean, I don't mind getting along through.
Yeah, I'm just lying through.
12, it's consideration of possible action on approving the following permanent road crossing permits for summer on electric in Oklahoma Natural Gas. I have a. Ready for a motion?
Yeah, first one's mine. I move we approve that one.
I have a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, and a second. All in favor? Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Chairman, I have none on 13 and 14.
Fantastic. Do you have anything on 15?
We do.
On the 15.
All righty, 15, consideration of possible action on consent of geniuses.
They rolled. Transfers.
You know, it's kind of heavy. A million dollars hanging in the balance. You'd think they'd show up to say, please don't make us do that.
You would think. Getting through.
Hey, we can give them a tip on where to buy rock. They're handing. Well, I thought maybe it's for help. Is that revolver found again?
Yes.
There's a, there's a, a, a.
Sheriff's free?
Are you ready for sheriff?
Practice. You know that's on video.
That's why I just had to reach in the video.
Depends on what camera you're going off to.
That's all I'm talking about.
Oh, it's smoke, yeah. I'm in the middle of that one.
One should be popping.
Damn, you didn't close this box up.
I'm gonna laugh.
Catch up here in a minute, buddy.
I'm gonna go hurry. Can we go ahead and talk about comments, announcements about a board while you're signing?
Sure.
I was just reading over the audit of, uh, what is it, OCC ED?
ED, yeah.
And I noticed where they donated $5,000 to ODOT for a party.
Taxpayers money.
Well, I was thinking that really ought to be criminal, us spending our money like that.
Double the budget to Las Vegas, not.
And I, I noticed they had like $3,700 of meals and lodging and I just think that's wrong. I mean, they're going to eat regardless if they're at work or not and they ought to pay for their own damn meal.
And a lot of that, some of that was alcoholic beverages and also paying for their, uh, wives and kids to have dinners and all that stuff as well. And, you know, the, that doesn't, we wouldn't be able to do that.
I wouldn't do that.
Well, I, yeah, legally we couldn't do that. Morally, we would not ever do that.
Anyway, this kind of rubbed me the wrong direction, I guess.
When we have our CED meeting coming up, I'm, I'm gonna ask which one of our representatives from our CED 5 voted to allow that $5,000 donation to their party fund. We'll see if we get anybody.
I mean, you know, you think about the road situation, $5,000 ain't nothing, but it'd been something to go toward the road fund.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't think we needed to have a $5,000 party. They don't tell what ODOT put in with that $5,000. Anyway.
Well, it was mostly our, our 6% certain money that's been stolen from us for the last several years. Anyway. I, I move we approve out of 15 on the agenda, sir. If we're done with that.
I got a motion.
Tucking.
And a second, all in favor? Aye, all opposed. 16, consideration of possible action on approving claims for payment for May 2017. Was the party for a convention or for a?
It was their 100th year anniversary party. Yeah.
Where at? Oklahoma City?
We weren't invited. Don't know.
I wanted to. Two years ago, two years ago, three years ago. It's been a while. But I certainly didn't intend it.
I didn't either.
No. No, I didn't know we were paying for it. Say, come on up, 100th anniversary. Anybody?
And this was the CED 5 that donated, I mean, all of them did, for sure.
Well, what happens is all of the CEDs, there's like eight of them, each one of the chairmen's of those boards make up the OCC EDV board.
Okay.
Right? And those are the guys that voted to, or approved, should have.
Yeah.
Voted to approve that $5,000 donation. And if our representative voted for that, then we're going to talk about why. At least for about that long.
What, you, OCC, what's the OC? That's our insurance.
Uh, it's, uh, it's, it's the Oklahoma.
Cooperative.
Okay.
It's the, it's the.
Cooperative Circuit Engineering District Board.
It's a way they can beat the laws. It's all of them.
They spend taxpayers' money on foolish things.
Pocket knives, polo shirts.
Sports jacket.
Swag. Exactly. Alcohol beverages. Well, the health department's on a roll.
I mean, do they have like five of them in here?
Yeah, there's one.
I got one right here. 62 cents.
There should be like a limit.
There is.
Yeah.
Zero.
Or one pin.
Zero, yeah, one pin.
Mm-hmm.
Mine was $29 off on real life dumpster. They weigh on it. Have a shot in the dark.
You don't know ahead of time?
Well, if it rains, you get it.
Yeah.
I move we approve.
Check. Out of 16. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Uh, any citizens are to be heard.
Morning, I know, I don't know if this is for the next one. Um, it's not only Jen, but I have a really quick update on the sirens that you had asked me about. Because I, I missed it.
Absolutely, go for it.
Um, Andy Goddard called me back this morning. Um, he has checked, last week, they checked all of our six county sirens. The heads are all good. He's got some batteries he needs to replace, but then we had the rain and so he's got to get in to get those done. Um, he said, he said everything's good. He also has been in contact with Stan at Cedar Valley and is going to get his checked. Um, they weren't able to do it at the end of last week because of the mud. They didn't want to leave ruts everywhere, but Andy seemed to, I mean, everything seems to be good on the, the heads of them. to, I mean, everything seems to be good on the, the heads of them.
Any, any, um, did he give you a guestman or one of you to have those batteries replaced?
He hoped today or tomorrow.
Okay.
If everything worked out, today or tomorrow. But he said he wouldn't guarantee that, but he hopes to be able to get those today or tomorrow.
So by the end of the week, probably?
Should have by the end of the week, for sure.
Correct.
Alright, is that it?
Yep.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
I guess, uh, let's go back up to number five. I mean, he's not here, but I can tell you my thoughts on that. Devon Energy and, I mean, big few of the oil companies have laid pipelines, and I held them to the guns in, in my part of the country, I didn't waive anything for them, and, and they done the work, like, was on the, I just don't think that I would ever vote to lower this for this guy coming in, and, I mean, he's no, he's not laying any more pipelines than, than what Devon has in District Three, so my vote would be, I wouldn't vote for it, because it's not my district.
Well, and, you know, if we, if you don't mind, if we do it for them, why don't we do it for everybody? You know? And just go ahead and change it. Well, I don't think we ought to change it, because like you say, they do a lot of damage to those roads, so. That's my thoughts.
I agree.
His being present or not does not, this, this is listed just as an FYI on the agenda as an action item for you to waive and or adjust, so you can take action based on that item, or you can no action it, however you all want to do with that item.
Well, I would recommend no action, I mean, why would I change it for a big company and I don't dare for the little guys?
I don't know, who's going to make the motion? Well, could the action be not to waive that?
That's where I was going.
I move we do not waive this. I'll second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Back down to comments, announcements by the board. Carry nine.
I just got one, uh, one thing, David rode around with us and the FEMA and the State Emergency Management got Friday, and we looked at roads and our big debris pile that got piled up again out on Chisholm Creek, and preliminary is, we, that may have paid off for us, so we may get some reimbursement back on some of our washed out roads and getting that debris pile moved. Thank you, David, appreciate your help on that, that's all I got, sir.
Mike, you got anything?
Oh, I don't know, I got a word from an owner, he's getting name of the domain by ODOT down there on the old Catfish Barn, and he just built a new building, a restaurant, and such, getting ready to open it up, and ODOT's told them they're going to do an eminent domain on it, plus I think there's going to be some changes to the On-Q Drive, that Western Drive right there, I, I, I don't think they did what ODOT wanted them to do, so there's going to be some changes in there, and we'll see how that goes for that Catfish Barn in Farbless area, but ODOT now has and wanted, they are going to do an eminent domain on that, including that big old electronic sign that he's got up in, in front there, that's also in the eminent domain process, so. That's about all I have, really.
Alrighty, 19, consideration possible action on the government.
So move.
Second.